Let me start with those who are in between the importer and customs. Are we happy with Bodogu, the agent? I want to hear from the clearing agent perspective. What is your take generally on this platform? And I know you are very, very old in the industry. You have seen Aseku Dya, you have seen Long Room, you have seen Plus Plus, Nices One, Nices Two. Now we are on Bodogu. How do you embrace this as brokers?
Yes, we are very happy with Bodogu because it makes our work seamless, so to say. And it's also, we are ready to embrace the new modernization. And because nobody is ready to continue to do a combustion business, which is not transparent enough. With B.Odogu, we have seen that it's seamless, it's transparent, and it's fault free. You can see your transaction yourself. And with the new arrangement, transformation, we are all happy as Nigerians because this is our own and it brings more revenue to Nigerian government.
So apart from happiness, what are your concerns?
Okay, initially, our concern is...
No initially, I mean now.
Now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, our concern is that, okay, with this new development, people will be asking, is there not going to be an alert with B.Odogu? If it is different, there will be some checks. But at least it will be like ninety to eighty percent free, unlike the other initial something where you have multiple alerts on whatever that has been presented.
Okay, I think that multiple alert is a concern. But multiple alert, it has to do with the system, not really Bodogu. But let me go back to GM, Trade Modernization Project Limited. I can attest to the fact that when you started this process of Bodogu, the participatory nature of it, what makes it different? What makes it unique from where we are coming from? And what makes it different in the fact that we are not going to find ourselves where we came from?
Thank you very much. I think I'd like to pick up from where Mr. Chiku left some of his comments in terms of that phrase that we've used a lot, homegrown. And I'd like to break that down. What does it mean in terms of homegrown? Homegrown, as far as Bodogu is concerned, is that from day one, Nigeria Customs Service has ownership of the source code of Bodogu. So Bodogu does not belong to any external entity. It belongs entirely to Nigeria Customs Service from day one. The second aspect of the homegrown is what happens to the information or the data that is generated on Bodogu. That data resides here in Nigeria, in the custody of Nigeria Customs Service, being managed by Nigeria Customs Service officers from the beginning to the end, through and through. And part of what makes this also very different and what ensures that we don't go back to what used to happen is that there is 100% operational control in the hands of Nigeria Customs Service. And that is written and coded into the concession agreement that we are implementing as concessionaire. So the days are gone where NCS does not even know where its transactions have been processed from, where its data are residing, and who has access to all of those data. So those are the changes, and that is what makes it very, very different. And that's what reassures NCS that the past has been left behind.
No issue of handing over... Hand over, probably, hand back, let me use this word.
Yes, with respect to hand back, we've started to actually hand back as we go. We're not waiting till the end of the project before we hand back. So whatever is completed in the system is being handed back to Nigeria Customs Service. So that possession is incremental as we go along. So you will never come a point in time where you are struggling to have access to your data. And by the time the project is done, you would never be in a position whereby you're having to pay for a license to operate Bodogu because you have 100% ownership. It is for Nigeria Customs Service.
I think you deserve a sound applause. Now, I want to hear, you know, there is a form popular social media. I want problem, I don't want problem. So coming to the banker, those problems you wanted to dish out over there. Pour it now, this space is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. Initially, I was delighted to be here. Now I am honored to be on stage and to be able to channel all the information that has been coming from customers and from other respective banks too. So when Bodogu came into place, I'm sure we started with the testing. And with all banks, the testing actually went well because we were able to see how to start or how to initiate the process. To the point that when it came live, we also channeled some of the glitches that we noticed. So far, the system is actually working. But we know it's working, but there are some few lapses that we have actually faced.
Let's know the lapses.
And it's really affecting the bank. The first lap was the communication. We hardly get information about the system, especially when we know that we have to use both Nices and Bodogu together. The last circular we received from...
Next one?
Communication, okay. The second one is the fact that the bank cannot amend Form M on Bodogu. We cannot amend or extend Form M on Bodogu. The next one is the confirmation of authenticity of the regulatory permit. Because most times, we attach manually. The customer attaches manually. And as the bank, we can't really confirm which one is authentic or the one that is not authentic. The fourth one...
Ah, three.
This is the third one.
Okay, you have mentioned the fourth one now.
The fourth one.
Okay.
Okay, the fourth one is the classification of HS code. Last week, I got calls from customers. They are trying to import paper. And when they attach the some product certificate, the system was still asking them for NAVDAQ certificate. I went to the platform to go and check. Because sometimes you have to confirm. So when I went there, I noticed that all items listed were Sun related, not NAVDAQ. So we had to look for an alternative, which it didn't work because anything we do, it means that we are actually bypassing the system. But what we actually told the customer is that the platform is still on review and we are going to channel the glitches that we have actually seen to custom for resolution. The other one is settlement for payment of duty. We noticed that settlement does not come with location code and location name, which is very, very hard for the bank to reconcile when we are doing our payment duty reconciliation. Then the fifth one is migration.
Sixth one, this is the sixth one.
Okay, thank you. Sixth one is migration on Bodogu. The last meeting we had with the Controller General was...
Migration of Bodogu itself?
Migration of Nices to Bodogu. Last two weeks, we were having calls from customer because when they get to the port, they said, they are always telling them that they have to come to the bank. And we know that for migration, the bank has nothing to do with it. So we didn't have any information to give to the customer. Then later, we got a report that there is provisional release, that once they can go to the command, get the provisional release, it will be migrated. Few days after, we received another report that customers cannot use provisional release anymore. Though with all this process, the bank were not informed. The only thing is that we hear from customers.
You started from communication and you ended with communication. Bukola, number one, communication gap. He started, when you started the process, there was poor communication. And when we are at the peak of the implementation, poor communication. Don't hold the PRO responsible. He mean ICT communication here, that's what he's saying.
Okay, first and foremost, we apologize that you did not get the communication. Proper communication was duly sent. The DCG actually sent a letter that we're actually piloting the new system and we're going to start testing the Form M because we actually had to get explicit approval from the Central Bank of Nigeria to that effect. A notification went out through the Central Bank of Nigeria and Nigeria Customs Service was copied in that communication. So we apologize for that if you did not receive it. So do you want me to attend to other questions as well? Okay, so first, he talked about banks not able to make amendments on the Form M. As we made mention earlier in the first panel, there are some modifications on business rules in Bodogu that we can confirm. But with respect to this particular question, we had extensive meeting with the Central Bank of Nigeria. As you know, Form M falls extensively within their purview and they have to make this decision. So we abided by the business rule that was given to Nigeria Customs Service and we built the system to reflect such. So if case of amendments and if you have issues with the business rule, representative from the Central Bank is here to help us should in case you want to take it up with them. I'm sure they can listen to your reasons and maybe they'll direct us to amend as such.
Amendment or extension, number three.
I've channeled it to him.
Number three.
Okay, yes. In terms of classification of HS code and all the items listed between Sun and NAVDAQ, we're actually aware of those issues and we have made necessary notifications to the regulatory authorities. Sun and NAVDAQ, they are equally aware about it. We've been working extensively with them in order for us to be able to ensure there's no...
Reduce this English, I'm coming. What caused the confusion? That somebody imported spare parts instead of Sun cap? I mean, you want to break down the conversation, not English, Abi.
Overlapping HS code has been...
So what really caused the issue now? Is the system confused or is from your own, what is the problem?
The system is not confused.
Okay.
Overlapping HS code based on each agency have their regulatory mandate or what they need to regulate. And Nigeria Customs Service during implementation, we got the list directly from the regulatory authorities. When we noticed the duplication in HS code and overlapping responsibilities, we have made it known to the regulatory authorities. Sun and NAVDAQ inclusive, they are both aware about it. And they are working towards it to resolve the overlap. So the issue is not from the system. It is based on the mandate and the shadows of these regulatory authorities and they are working on it.
Fourth question.
Fourth question is, for the location code, yes. We've already discussed that that has been taken under notification. We'll work on the location code for them to be able to see it and help them in their reports as well. And then finally, migration to Bodogu. With respect to the migration, it is an IT migration and we apologize if you feel you need to be notified before the migration is being done. These are Form Ms. that has already been approved by the central banks and by the authorized dealer banks already. So the system is actually in charge of migrating them from one system to another. So notifying them, I don't think is actually... We didn't want to stress you about it because it does not actually require any human intervention. It only requires transmission from one system to another. However, you made mention of the fact that some of the traders came back and they said that they gave you a wrong information. So please, I would like to implore everyone, if you want to get information, there is need to go to the right authority. If you want to get information from these commands, please either go to the technical supervisor. There are dedicated helplines who are custom officers in each command. Please ensure that you get the right information from them so that you don't have to get wrong information because we have gotten the information. By the time my DCG investigated, they told that it was somebody in the DTI cafe. So please, if you want to get information from the commands, ensure that you get those information from custom officers who are in those designated commands.
So there is no communication gap?
There is no communication gap. They went through the wrong channel.
Now, back to NAVDAQ. What really caused this duplication of HS codes? And do you have any issue of integration with the platform?
So thank you very much for this question. And then I need to state clearly that we are working with Nigeria Customs Service to ensure that we have system-to-system integration for efficient data sharing, especially around HGDs that are regulated or that are carrying regulated products. So the issue about having HS code overlaps is not a new thing. And then by each agency's mandate, it is clear that in some cases, there would be overlap. And one very, you know, easy way to explain to people is, for example, let's take this bottle water I have here, right? Somebody is going to drink the content. Ensure that it's safe. Another agency is mandated to check that the quality of the plastic is appropriate to carry this water. So this is a very simple way of explaining why they are sometimes overlap. So what it is the...
Of it, in that case.
So the fact that each agency has that mandate is actually legitimate. However, there will be, you know, there's been discussion between NAVDAQ and Sun to look at how, you know, some of the HS codes, you know, can be considered, you know, we can work in such a way that there's not much overregulation for the client. And these discussions are ongoing. And then I can say categorically that the DG of NAVDAQ and then the head of Sun also have given the mandate to ensure that this overlap is addressed.
Well, you mentioned the word overregulation. And I'm sure importers will not be happy with overregulation.
Yeah.
So in practical steps, what do we do? Because whenever you have overregulation, then it will be impeding to trade facilitation.
Okay, so when you say overregulation, overregulation is not any agency's fault. But say, like we have in the country, we have quite a number of challenges, even with the legal structure, we have some, you know, changes we need to do around our constitution. The mandates of these agencies actually demand that they do this work. But you know, there has to be a framework in which when government is working together, you know, as agencies, you are not working in silos. And then there are this kind of memorandum of understandings that agencies need to have among themselves, this discussion, to ensure that I can trust you enough to do part of my job for me, right? And you can trust me enough to do part of your job for you. So these discussions are things that are always ongoing. And it's also important that we always bring this to the fore when we have, you know, locations like this and then that will help the agencies to be able to align.
So all in a bid to strike a balance between regulation and trade facilitation?
Exactly.
Let me go back to NDLA. Any teaching issues with Bodogu? Is there, is integration? Do you have any integration with NCS? Or how do you operate in the digital space with NCS? Digital space?
Thank you very much. The mandate of the National Drug Law Enforcement Agency is very clear. The mandate is to bring to the barest minimum drug abuse and trafficking within the society. So we work within our own mandates. Most of the drugs of abuse, apart from cannabis, which is locally produced, are imported into the country. And this importation processes pass through the Bodogu documentation process. So so far, I think the process has been very seamless. We've had a very cordial working relationship and the Bodogu platform has provided most of the items that we needed in order to curtail the influx of drug abuse and trafficking. However, the people we are dealing with, we are not dealing with the conventional importers, businessmen. We are dealing with people that are always a step ahead. We are dealing with smugglers, people that always want to take advantage of whatever system that is available to bypass it in order to smuggle in goods. Most of these things that come in into the country, especially cocaine, heroin, all the psychotropic substances, tramadol and codeine, pass through this Bodogu system. And it is because they have manipulated and have succeeded in smuggling these goods into the country. So the documentation process needs to be strengthened in order to authenticate and verify all the documents that are submitted. Because most of the decisions that have been done, it has been found that most of the companies that are used for the importation are fake companies. So there is need to strengthen the verification process for the Bodogu to be very, very effective. Thank you.
Thank you. I mentioned digital space, but I will come back to you. I may want to understand the problems so that those on the table, high table and across will be able to respond in terms of system integration. Are you at par with us or what have we done so far? But I need to re-wheel the conversation back to where we started. That is, we did the testing to show that whether it will work when even people think it will not work in a particular command. And we all know it is PTML command. Now, I will start with first, before Grimaldi, the area controller. Lessons learned. What do you think we ought to have performed at the initial stage and we couldn't do it? And if you are given another opportunity to come for another circummissionary journey, you would do it differently? Because I'm sure it was not seamless, the whole process. So what are the challenges? And how did you summand those challenges? And what you think we should have done in a different way during the initial implementation stage? Hello? Hello?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You walk by faith. Bodogu came from nowhere to become something today because of God. I say this because change is so difficult for people to accept. And Bodogu is just one of those legacies that came as a change to a system that probably has outlived its usefulness. And we tango, it started from PTML. The challenges are numerous, but we thank God we were able to sum it, sum out them. We saw it as we charting a pathway for the future for Nigeria Customs Service. And because of that, I ensure that I told my officers, this laudable project must not fail. Whether I would like it or not, we just have to succeed in ensuring that it succeeds. Bearing that in mind, we had an open mind to receiving complaints from people. From the one, we told them, it's not a perfect system because there's nothing perfect in nature, especially when it is done by man. So bearing that in mind, we told them, we are there with them. We tangoed for the implementation committee that came. We had sensitization of four sectors or segment of the industry, from our officers to the banks, to terminal operators, to stakeholders at various times. And we're open to them, just like Abbas said, 24/7. Want to receive them, want to hear them because we know it's a system that some of them are advanced to. But one of the greatest challenges is that the low-hanging fruits that you ordinarily go to banks, banks were not coming in. That was when we had the greatest challenge. Because we go to a time, only one bank, two banks, they want to Bodogu. We saw it as what is the problem? But we thank God after some time, they had to buy into it and we are better off. Yes, there are challenges. Like I said, the bank is a challenge, but now it's over. The other challenges are just normal because as we know it, as I said, people have to onboard into Bodogu. Some people are not even ready. But to tell them, Bodogu has come to stay. So I thank God that when it was launched on the 13th of October, by November 11th, we stopped the transmission on the old platform, which is Nices. Which means we have no alternative again because they have even locked us off. The Nices lock does is a big and a huge challenge on our part. They locked us off, they don't want us. I said, okay, better, we took up the challenge. And I said, okay, my guys, this is what we're going to do. We stop the transmission of manifest to Nices November 11. It's just by faith that everyone has to come on board. And we started doing a huge form of sensitization, telling the terminal operators, we thank them, they had to buy into our vision, to come with us. The agents, yeah, we had our rough times. At times we quarreled, at times they go to the crisis. I would step in, I would beg, I would plead. My boys, as they just take it calm. I thank Nigerians for what they are. They brought into the world homegrown, which the MBI just, the GM just told us. There is our baby, it cannot die. And because it's our baby, what do we do? You don't trade away, you have to win the baby. When you are winning a baby, you are going to come across so many problems. And we sat down patiently to say, because this is our baby, everyone involved in Bodogu is Nigerian, Nigerian. Whether you are in the uniform sector, you are wearing a uniform, or you are in the private sector, we're all Nigerians. And the Nigerian-ness in us, I told them, Bodogu is not the platform, you know, the rocket science. Even when people fly rockets, like America in 1978, they went with Challenger. Under seventy-eight minutes, they were gone. They came back, they didn't run away. So Bodogu was not so much a problem that we cannot solve. And I thank God that the crop of officers we have and all the implementation committee members, they bought into that vision that this thing shall not fail and cannot fail. And that was what actually propelled us. And with the understanding of our stakeholders, we were able to summon most of the challenges. But we thank God, eventually, the banks came in. Yes, you said, what could have been done before? I think...
Now that you answered my question.
Yes, I'm going there. Yes, I think from the steering committee level would have brought in the banks initially on time. Not all of them. Make it an exclusive club. Four, five banks to come on board. Once they buy into it, others will know that it's successful, that they good platform that they can work with. And with that, we'd have gone ahead. Yes, we have done a lot of sensitization. Sensitization is never much, never too much. Even as I talk to you today, we still do sensitization in my place. There are some people that have not even bought into Bodogu, call them to my office, Abbas, train them. Abbas, do this, go to their place. We go to their offices, go and train them, do this, do that. So sensitization is always ongoing. So sensitization is always ongoing, like the CBN man said, is a work in progress. We are not here there, but I can tell you, there were over 80%, 90%. These I know very well. I say this with confidence that as I speak, we have collected over 300 billion on Bodogu platform. Because we stopped using Bodogu as far back as November last year. So I'm sorry, we stopped using NICEs as far back as November last year. So all our transactions is on Bodogu. So it's, it's working. So to all other new commands, it's going to work. We only need patience with them, engage our stakeholders, talk, talk to them. There are challenges, yes.
Thank you.
But those challenges are not something we cannot overcome.
So Apepa and Tinkan, you are now new commander, this PTML, there is old commander now, so take note. Now Grimaldi, terminal operators. I'm sure you conceded there are some sacrifices you made and loss. So please, let's hear that. So that other terminal operators will learn from you and follow you.
There was a lot of sacrifice, as you said. It was, my CSC have said everything. It was a lot of confusion, particularly in November, October time, when we need to completely migrate into Bodogu, when we shut off the NICEs too. The November, sorry, the major challenge was we, it has to, because the way the thing works is, it starts from transmission of manifest, manifest will is coming, to everything changed, everything changed. I don't want to go back to what he has said. So we worked together and we were able to achieve a lot. Today, we are like, I would say, so far, we are doing in PTML, Grimaldi, we are doing, if I say 100%, it would be too much of, but I would say we are doing 95%. Great, because 5% for room, room for improvement. The Bodogu has provided us. And thanks to this CG's wisdom of making sure that this is a worthwhile investment. Today, nobody saw no more hard copy manifest in the Bodogu system. Everything is transmitted. So there's a lot of transparency from port of loading to you transmit this manifest direct. There is no interface between anybody, they receive it as it is. So and the system interprets it, what is like garbage in garbage, what you get is, what gets in is what gets out. And again, to my controller, Christopher Fayan, who was assistant controller Fayan, I don't know whether he's still here, who is the lead team with Nabil. I think the team have done a great job so far. And to our very good own inside house control, assistant controller Abbas, which we have used him, I don't know how many battery remain in his, percentage of battery remain inside him right now. It's, it's a lot of sacrifice, a lot of. Yeah, if we, that's why, that's why I don't want to go back to all the things he has said. It's, we have to, everybody have to make sacrifices at, at that time. And so far, now we are back, everything is going well. And interestingly, again, under this Bodogu, we have done almost 150 vessels currently with no, with no issues at all, all transmitted fine, everything. The area of bank is where we, particularly when we talk about the transitioning from NICEs 2 to Bodogu for importers. The challenge is, the challenge is there, of course, but it's not like it's insurmountable. It's being handled by case by case basis, yeah? If you have such issue, and this was like from the, from Ems that were approved by CBN around February last, I mean, before February, before, before March. And it has been, it has been handled on case by case basis by the team of CSC and controller Abbas, who dedicated themselves, even I think he has all the bank in Nigeria managing, I mean, branch managers' bank numbers now because he's, he's all, he's, I don't know, it's crazy. So all these are the, all these are the, they were, these are the only few challenges we have. But I believe by the end of the year, when the transition is completed as projected, the issue of Form M, old Form Ems and all this will be out. And then, as my CSC said, Bodogu have gone to stay, we're only going to work and improve on it.
Thank you very much. Bukola, you are clapping, I'm coming back to you. There is a model, technological acceptance model. And there are some critical element when it comes to acceptance of innovation, new technology. Ease of use, adaptability, you know, accessibility and so on and so forth. You remember the story of Nokia? They did everything, it didn't work. Apple, they did much and it works. Now what makes you think? What parameters have you put in place to make sure it works? I hope my question is too simple. Okay, please go ahead. So that we will not tell the story of Nokia, we want to tell the story of Apple.
First things first, I remember when the issue of NICEs started. The CGC called a meeting and it said it's like a war room meeting and the management was there. So first thing that he did was to ensure, how can we ensure presence in all locations? How can we ensure that Bodogu is present in all locations? And it takes this CG to come up with a strategy to do that. And the first thing they did was to ensure that there was infrastructure presence across all locations. Because they considered the point of view of the trader. No one wants to stress you, they want to make the trade seamless, they want to make the transition as smooth as possible. So infrastructure was one thing that they really considered to ensure that it was put in place. And in terms of infrastructure, I can say, yes, we've really achieved a lot in terms of infrastructure. Can we do more? Definitely. Are we going to do that? Definitely. All your issues, all your concerns, all your feedbacks are things that are channeled into our work plan and our timelines for us to be able to do better and ensure that we get to where we want to get to. So part of what we are also doing is in charge of our process optimization to ensure that accessibility of the system, even though it's there for you to be able to access the system, we've also set up communication channels. And with that, I can say that to ensure that, the last meeting we had in Apepa, the CGC also promised that availability is one thing that he will ensure that we increase more manpower for the implementation team that is across all the zones. So with that, more officers will be there to ensure that they are available to do the work, to ensure that this Bodogu is accessible by everyone and people can see it and they understand it. So more teams, because I remember when someone gave a comment that said they want more ACFAM, at least they should deploy five of each in all the commands. So availability and ensuring that the people have access to the system is one thing that we take priority of.
Thank you very much. Those are not the questions you gave me, they are out of points. Okay, Jim, there is this analogy that no, in fact, virtually no downtime. Is it Babala or magic? What happens that no downtime? What's the difference in terms of speed? You know, that time when we are on NICEs, you log onto NICEs and it to take you four, five hours before you log in. What happened? Was it a magic or what? I mean, I mean in, in figures, what transferred?
It's, it's not magic.
Okay.
Before now, Nigeria Customs Service as an institution had on average about 150 megabytes or megabits per second in terms of internet connectivity with an aging infrastructure, in terms of network infrastructure. So one of the first things that we did was to recognize that as a major bottleneck. And we tackled it in partnership with NCS. And what that partnership has given rise to, right, right now in terms of numbers, is two data centers that are actively running. Combined connectivity for Nigeria Customs Service of 6 gigabits per second across all the commands. Redundancies built into the system. As well as a very, very active cybersecurity program, which is a partnership between TMP and NCS. Those are some of the things that have given rise to this no downtime. So it's a robust system, it's a system that is actively supported. And of course, it's a system that is supported by enterprise-grade investments across board.
Thank you very much. Bank, EcoBank. Some of the issues we face at the initial stage, you know, initially bank have a very critical role to play in registration of Form M. And there are times you go to banks and they will tell you that Bodogu is not working, the network is down. We had some issues with some banks and I will not mention them. Thinking that you have taken away some of the responsibilities of bankers and you have shipped those responsibilities back to importers, declarations. Do you think that challenge still exists? Or what I'm saying is completely out of point, that did not occur?
All right. What you actually asked. I'm sure during the initial stage of initiating Bodogu, while we are doing the testing, most banks were actually involved with the whole processing. Now, there are some banks that have their issues. And the way they handle their issues might be like that. I represent EcoBank. Immediately, we were done with the processing, the testing of Bodogu. The first thing we did was to initiate a training for our relationship team and the bank managers. Because these are the direct representative of the customer. During the time when we were having NICEs, when customers cannot process, sometimes they don't come to us, the trade officers, they go to the relationship managers. These people have been equipped to train the customers on how to capture. Now that we have moved to Bodogu, we have also educated these same bank managers and relationship officers. But I will mention something. Sometimes when you are actually going through a process, there might be back and forth. I can see that sometimes their attitude might be due to the price verification system. When the price verification system came to place, almost all the banks were involved also. Because all prices of goods have to be checked. But after so many glitches and so many communications, we noticed all of a sudden that a circular was saying that price verification system has ended and we should go back to NICEs without verifying the goods. So I'm sure when this platform also came, they actually added negative belief that this is like price verification system. But one thing is Bodogu has actually come to stay. Because that was the first thing we heard when we did our meeting with Customs. But as a bank, we are not just a forwarding agent where the customer submit and we quickly validate. No, we also do our checking, we also do our reviewing. We also educate them too. I have instances where customer will tell you, treat it like that. And when you treat it like that, they come back to you as a bank to tell you, are you not supposed to know? So this knowledge has to be passed from either Customs, CBN to us, then we also disseminate. There might be banks that are having that negativity. And sometimes might be due to the fact that they don't have that communication. For a human being that doesn't have information, definitely, you would not be able to channel the right thing. It's not you mislead people because you are already misled. So I can't deny it. But as a bank, we are also doing everything it takes to train, to educate customers and also disseminate information appropriate.
Thank you very much. He's, I think he's deserve another sounding applause because he throw it back to me again that we need to communicate well. I've gotten that, I've decoded that your message. Let me move back to two agencies here. I wish Sun is also there. We have NDLA, we have NAVDAC, we have Sun and what, so now NAVDAC and NDLA, these are the two questions I want to pose to you. What do we need to do to make sure that our systems are seeing each other effectively? I'm using layman's language. Effective interface between our systems.
So one thing is to ensure we enhance transparency. And from the comments that we've had in the previous session, some of the, you know, the good things that have worked around Bodogu is the fact that it's been more transparent. So for us as NAVDAC, we expect that the integration we have, system to system, between our port clearing system and Bodogu is quickly finalized so that we can have, you know, access to data that, you know, is crucial for us to clear shipments. And then that would enhance speed. And once there is speed, it means that trade is facilitated. So but if we have to then rely on manual capture, you know, before we can process any transaction, then that will delay us significantly.
Thank you very much. NDLA, in few seconds, I need to wrap up.
Hello? The nature of work of the National Drug Law Enforcement Agency is not about trade facilitation, but is on national security. Nobody comes to NDLA to submit documents for the importation of drugs. They are being smuggled. That is why I was saying that all we need to do is to strengthen the verification processes in the importation of goods. They do false declaration whenever they are bringing goods. So I think this is an area too, that the shipping lines need to, have to work together for the shipping lines to do more verification than allowing them to be used as conduit for the smuggling of drugs into the country.
Intelligent sharing also help.
Intellect, of course.
Thank you very much. Back to Ankla. And the issue of transparency, the issue of, he mentioned the issue of false declarations and so on. What are you doing in few seconds, 10 seconds? What are you doing to make sure that your members are compliant? Because compliance is very critical to trade facilitation. And by the time you have false declarations and so on, definitely there will be more checks on you. And when there is more check, trade will be impeded. What is your take?
Okay, let me tell you today. NACA being the biggest association, what we do is we are telling our members, your KYC is paramount. And not all tailoring agents are NACA members. So if you don't know your customer, if anything happen, you are on your own. Another thing about the process, the clearance process is this. Custom is trying, doing all their best, but let me tell you. Clearing is a process. Once one leg is affected, it messes up the whole thing. Odogu, Bodogu, excellent. The CGC officers are up and doing, but making all these agencies to see reason why they have to follow suit, they don't want to. They still want to lie on where they block bill of lading. From even from before inception, you have not started, they have blocked your bill of lading. If, if you are doing your work and you are transporting, same page with custom, there is no way, 80% of what is being seized or being determined today is by custom. It's not you that share the intelligence with them. They have to, so maybe everybody have to take themselves back to the presidency. Custom is championing, we are talking about single window, we are talking about transformation. They should follow suit. They should not be overlapping. They are, your Odogu can be excellent, but once it's being challenged or one leg caught, it affects the other.
Thank you. I will just take few words, one word. When you sacrifice, was there any benefit for that sacrifice? Did the service also offer something to you for that sacrifice? Or you only did for that Christmas and the?
Of course, there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefits so far. For example, as I mentioned, it, what I said. For example, as I mentioned, it, what I said, no shipping line with the B Odogu should be submitting hard copy manifest, it means that's a kind of cost-saving effect on the, on the, on the operation. There is, there's a whole lot of it, because now, like he said, there are other issues of, you know, here and there between agencies that the B Odogu has completely eradicated, yeah? Again, I'm in support of what he said, that there has to be some kind of synergy in a way that when custom is progressing, other agencies should progress. That's not to say that they are not progressing, but there has to be some level of growth in translating into ICT in terms of examination, in terms of other things, which will help trade facilitation. Because where, if one thing, one thing we must say is, if, for example, you mentioned about blocking of bill of letting, if you block a bill of letting and someone is already done every other, completed every other process, sorry, the cargo is going to be there, the trade has actually been impeded. So, these are, there are benefits and again, there are challenges.
Very much. Area Controller, in three seconds, wrap up, three words, sir. Sorry, I'm not giving instruction, I'm only the moderator. After the moderator, you're in charge, sir.
Thank you very much. I would just say Bodogu has come to stay, and this legacy been recruited to customs, and we admonish every other government agency that you can do it. If your IT support is still with foreigners, take a cue from what customer has done. If you can do it, you can do also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. On this note, I would like to say thank you to Assistant Controller Omoni, my brother from Ankla, Grimaldi, Custom Area Controller PTML, our conscripted panelists from EcoBank, NDLA, NAVDAQ, and the GM of Trade Modernization Project Limit. Thank you very much for your time and we appreciate you.
Alright, thank you very much, National PRO. Please just file in for quick group photograph. While the photograph is ongoing, may I please inform us that, the photograph can go on, please. May I please quickly inform us that what we have been doing so far is just the appetizer. The real deal will be coming up after lunch. But before lunch, permit me to bring up the, okay, gender balancing, alright. No, alright, so while the, alright, with the kind permission of the Comptroller General of Customs, I invite the Comptroller General of Customs to give some remarks on what has happened thus far. Some comments to please make some remarks on the interactive session and what we've gathered so far. Kind permission of the CGC, sir, if you may will, to come up and address us before we go for lunch. Please, let's be seated, the CGC will address us before we go for lunch. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, the moderator. Please, you may be seated. And I think this has been a very useful session, some three hours or thereabouts, well spent. And as we are transiting, I want to observe that we've really made the best use of the time. I sincerely thank all panelists, all individuals who ask questions, from the participants who started up, has been delighted, and then ended up being honored. We had the opportunity to really see him well, and by the way, I had the chance to see that he had a very nice shoe, I love your shoe. So, you know, these days, banks have changed, when banks dressed up, bankers dressed up those days, they wear socks, they wear long trousers, but these days, these people wear trousers that are almost nillet, so we are able to see the socks and the shoe. If that was the intention, I like your shoe, I saw it. And PTML, we cannot thank you enough. You know, this is about the third time when we will bring a major project, and then we take it to PTML to pilot. And this says something about a terminal like that, a terminal that is willing to partner with you, to say, yes, it is, you're going to bring forward a change, and we are ready to identify with you. And what we have seen during this panel shows that, yes, for every change process, there could be sacrifices that will be made. In those early days, when we started back in October, I remember how many sessions that we had with PTML. In fact, it got to a time when we had insinuations that perhaps this was deliberate to price them out of the market, that possibly some people just wanted us to divert traffic to other ports, or possibly to neighboring ports out of the country. But along the line, we were able to meet ourselves, you know, somewhere along the way, some more sacrifices, and we are now happy that we are now at increasing level in PTML. And I believe that we are going to achieve the same level of smoothness in order commands, once we appreciate the fact that every change process brings forth some level of sacrifice, but if the commitment is there, we will both benefit from the desired change that we want to bring about. Thank you so very much, PTML. And with that, I also like to appeal to our banks. One of the feedback that somebody gave us was that maybe we will have started with a fewer number of banks, just like we did with Terminal, so that we do not encounter this kind of problems that we had. So, we are sounding this as a kind of lessons learned to our banks. If we need to step up, either change our system, or we have a major progress, we will have to narrow it down to banks who are willing to swim or float or sink with us, because that's the essence of this kind of situation that has possibility for co-ownership. So, we just want to enjoy you, to still continue to collaborate with us. We will open up this kind of platform so that we'll take direct feedback from you on how to improve. Initially, during the opening session, I talked about some difference, you know, the fact that Bodogu is bringing cost reduction, cost of doing business, ease of doing business. One partner agency said, well, theirs is about security. We also have a security mandate. But then, the whole idea is that we have discovered that when you deploy the right technology and with the right attitude of stakeholders, you can actually win both battles, that of security, that of revenue, that of trade facilitation. These are not mutually exclusive mandates. So, as we deploy technology, we will be getting better, the balancing act, such that none of these mandates will have to suffer because we are deploying a trade facilitation system. And you know that we must give power to our women. This looks very, very strange. As Chairman of WCO, I am supposed to promote gender equality and diversity, and we've done this so well in the customs. When you look at the rollout of Bodogu, women are occupying very, very strategic positions, both of them, all of them, fair complexion, dark complexion, those of regular heights, those of extra heights, we have so many of them. Even in TMP, a woman is a general manager, I'm not sure we have recognized you, Dr. Ajidala. So, I, I think it's part to our women, and they have shown that when we depend on them, they can actually do things right. So, thank you so very much. And I'm bringing this in because they are very good balancers, they know how to balance all the extremes that we need. So, maybe I will employ NDLA, NAVDAQ to give their women more opportunities and let them drive their ICT and modernization. Now, talking seriously, in terms of the four percent FOB that I spoke about in the earlier session, I only talked about the fact that with implementation of four percent FOB, that the one percent CISS will reduce, will be removed. It is not only one percent CISS that will be removed, the seven percent cost of collection, which is also being charged, will also be completely removed. So, by the time, so by the time you aggregate, aggregate, one house, please, by the time you aggregate this, you will also, you will discover that it's actually a win-win situation for everybody. Let's look at this. Where does the seven percent cost of collection, where do we take it from? We take it from the federation accounts to administer customs, to fund customs activities. It is taken from the federation accounts. What this represents is that the three tiers of governments, the federal government, the state government, and the other sub-nationals will compromise seven percent of what is, what ought to have gone to the federation accounts. That's what we have practiced in the last 10 years or thereabout. Under the new act, four percent FOB is to be paid upfront, and that's it. Once that is done, it is hundred percent of the revenue generated by customs that will now go to federation accounts. So, it is going to be a win-win situation for all of us. So, I just felt that I needed to make that clarification. So, with that clap, I now believe that by tomorrow, we can make all the necessary tweaking of the system so that we can start the collection of FOB in earnest. One thing that I've seen from this in the last two hours, which is a positive takeaway for me, and I'm indeed proud to say this, is the fact that the level of stakeholder engagement has been very high since the introduction of Bodogu. We got so many positive feedbacks from banks, from the users, from terminal operators, and we are indeed grateful about that. We deployed help desk in all the various commands. And one of the major takeaways of this is that we are going to strengthen those help desk even further, so that their, the reaction time, the response time, the response rate for them to the issues that you raised would even be faster and deeper than we are, that they are doing before. So, it's a useful lessons that we have learned, and we will build on it. The second one is that the ICT, they have developed a set of questions, frequently asked questions. I've heard some of those questions, some of those questions, I did not hear anybody talked about it, but they have gone a stage, they've taken one stage forward to put all those questions together in a document. Questions like providing general information about Bodogu, what is Bodogu, what is Nigeria Customs Modernization Project, what are the key services offered by Bodogu? How can, who can use Bodogu platform? What should I do if I don't remember the email associated with my team? What should I do if I don't receive the verification email during logging? These are very, very useful questions, which I believe we hate our users. There are about thirty or more questions, and I've tasked them that they should update this list with some new questions that were asked today. And they would make this document available to us, we'll find a way of circulating it to all of you. First, we'll put it on our web, on our website, we will let all the help desk in the various command have copies of them. We will also attempt to translate them into PIGIN, so that, you know, those who can have access to the PIGIN version can see it and relate with it. Perhaps the PRO would also be giving, the PR unit would be giving this document, so that they can also develop an audio, a video version, which we can share across all our platforms. Then, we started this town hall in Lagos. I'm very sure once our colleagues in the eastern ports, when they hear about this, before they start talking about marginalization, they have marginalized us as if we don't exist. We will plan, we will make contacts with them, the eastern ports, and then our stakeholders in the north, we also have quite sizable number of people in places like Kaduna and Kano. This town hall will be taken to them. Well, in the east, we may not call it town hall, maybe we just call it village meeting, so that people will identify with it much more easily. Finally, officially, there is a session dedicated to question and answers, questions and answers, to which is meant to be the interactive part. This was the panel on, so we'll just give opportunity for those of you, if you still have questions that you want to raise that has not been addressed. So, that will be taken immediately after lunch. But for us, I was tempted to say, let us take them immediately, but I was told that because of this program, some people are fasting, and they need to break their fast during the lunch. So, we will break for lunch. I will only advise you, number one, this is a five-star hotel, please take only those things that you know, that you are sure of, so that you don't run baleh. And secondly, don't take more than you need, so that you are not going to be sleeping in the afternoon session. Thank you very much.
Okay, please, we'll be returning. Okay, go ahead. Hello, please, can we, can we come back, please? The lunch is not yet ready, so that we will not be starting.